You can go in here in a minute.
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of like order, but a little different.
Called the study session of June 20, 2022, joint session, DDA corridor studies to order at 6:00 PM. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, if we can have roll call, please.
Certainly, Council of Persons do pray.
Here.
Higgins?
Here.
Kelsey?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Salsedo?
Here.
Tobin?
Here.
And Mayor Kearns?
Here.
Okay, well, here we are, and we have Carl Malish, who is our DDA and EDC Executive Director. Carl, I'm going to turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, first of all, I want to thank the Council for scheduling this joint work session. It's joint among, and they were invited officials of the City of Lincoln Park, obviously. Our Council is all here. E-course, they were involved in this. And we also have in the audience members of the Economic Development Corporation of City of Lincoln Park and the Downtown Development Authority, City of Lincoln Park. Invitations were also extended to the Planning Commission of the City of Lincoln Park. Anyway, we have with us tonight our consultant team, and they are going to give you an update and brief you on where this whole study and plan has headed. First of all, there's one entity, one topic, and that's the Southfield Road Corridor Study and Plan. That was a plan that was funded completely by the State of Michigan Department of the Treasury, thanks to our city manager's connections with Treasury. That's, that element costs the state about over $100,000. That study is supposed to be looking at land use, building conditions, traffic, roadway, other physical characteristics in the reach of, beginning at the Allen Park, Lincoln Park city limits, through Lincoln Park, through E-course, to the Detroit River and West Jefferson. Another study that has been done in conjunction with this is a transportation study, traffic equity study more specifically, for the Fort Street Corridor, which is essentially the heart and soul of our downtown. And that reaches from Outer Drive all the way down to Champagne. And we have tonight, as I said, our consultant team here. The consultant team is led by Beckett and Rader. You're all familiar with Beckett and Rader. They've done quite a bit of planning for the city over the last several years. Liz Gunden is the lead planner on the project, and she is here with us tonight. In addition from Beckett and Rader, we have Brian, Brian Barick, who's a landscape architect. If I'm not mistaken, he's one of the principals of Beckett and Rader. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. And then we also have the delight to introduce Shannon Silty. I probably messed that up, didn't I? I didn't? Okay, great. She is also a landscape architect, and she's part of the consulting team. One other name that you're probably familiar with, Kristy Summers. She's also part of the team, but she had a previous engagement, so she is not here this evening. In addition to the Beckett and Rader folks, we also have Lori Adams here. She is a principal and one of the honchos that runs the traffic engineering firm CGI. They are located in Toledo, very close, obviously, to the Michigan border. And she's very adept with M-dot as well as O-dot, I guess, right? Is that what they call it? Yeah. Okay. Anyway, I'm going to turn this over right now, and I'm going to turn it over to Liz, and she's going to kick off this, this review and slideshow of what our consultants have come up with. I would ask you, you know, sometimes there's a brilliant question, and you need clarification at the moment. Go ahead and shout out your question. I would ask the people in the audience, though, to hold your questions. And when we do receive questions later, we need you to identify your name, your affiliation, and then tell us what your question is. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Liz.
Thank you, Carl. And thank you all for being here. I want to reiterate what Carl said, that we appreciate your time to do this study session tonight. So just a brief overview of what we are going to talk about. First, we will give overview and general findings of the Southfield Road Corridor Study. I'll briefly go through some zoning recommendations, but won't go into great detail because those are pretty technical. And then Brian will talk about the design recommendations. Then we will jump to the Fort Street Corridor, give an overview, and then Brian will talk about the design recommendations. And then Lori will go into the traffic analysis and study that happened for both corridors. There should be plenty of time at the end for questions, so we look forward to that. So starting with the Southfield Road Corridor, just an overview of some of the project objectives. I know many of you have been involved in this process the whole time, so this is likely a repeat, but just, just want to refresh your memories. There were three goals for this study. The first is to increase the consistency of the built environment along the corridor. Second is to improve its economic return. And third is to facilitate non-motorized access to its businesses and recreation assets. General findings. So we, we took a look at existing conditions and did some, quite a bit of community engagement last fall that many of you participated in. So just as a summary, the majority of the corridor, as Carl mentioned, it spans from Allen Park all the way to the Detroit River and E-course. But the majority of the corridor hosts commercial land uses. In, in some areas of the corridor, we have deteriorating building conditions and high vacancy rates, especially in the middle section in both Lincoln Park and E-course. There's limited vegetation along the corridor. There is lighting. It's, it's mostly auto-oriented, so if you're a pedestrian, there really isn't much lighting as you're walking along. There are regular bus stops, but most of those are just signs, so limited amenities like shelters and benches. And then limited pedestrian crossings. So in terms of zoning, we did a comparison between Lincoln Park and E-course because this study spans both communities. There are, let's see, 13 zoning districts amongst, between the two communities. But the majority, almost 80% of the zoning districts are either the Municipal Business District in Lincoln Park or the Commercial, Commercial District in E-course. So that's, those zones, the commercial zones are really the focus of the recommendations. In general, the uses permitted between the two communities are pretty similar. Just the format that are presented is different. In E-course, E-course's zoning ordinance was updated just a few years ago, and Lincoln Park is about to update it, so this will be a prime time to sort of align, align the two communities. But in E-course, there's a table, whereas in Lincoln Park, it's more cumulative, so long lists. So one recommendation is to, you know, make, make the Lincoln Park ordinance more of that tabular format to align with E-course. While the commercial uses are pretty similar between the two communities, there are some differences. So because the corridor spans the two communities, it would, it would be beneficial to make sure that those commercial uses are aligned. And then there are some differences in area regulations, so like landscaping and architectural standards. That would be, it'd be beneficial for those to be more similar. I'll go into brief detail of some use recommendations. The team met with a, a group called Recast City, which talks, which we were talking about small-scale manufacturing. This is an emerging industry and sector, basically people who make things. So we're recommending to sort of focus that general corridor area in both Lincoln Park and E-course to allow for small-scale manufacturing uses. In E-course, in E-course's zoning ordinance, residential uses are allowed in the commercial zones, but not in Lincoln Park. So we're recommending considering mixed-use residential and commercial along the corridor, and also consider permitting high-density housing by right on the corridor. There's a national housing shortage. This seems like a prime opportunity along there. And then we have automotive, quite a few automotive uses, like shown in the, in the image there. There, the automotive uses are there and probably are not, are not going anywhere, but they could improve their visual effect. So, you know, adding new specific screening or additional landscaping standards and enforcement for those types of uses. For site development standards, like I said earlier, aligning, aligning the standards between the two communities would be important. One way to do this would be to establish sort of an overlay that goes, spans the whole corridor, but applies to both communities. Then you're not wrestling as much with minor discrepancies between the two communities zoning ordinances because you are dealing with two jurisdictions. Parking, in E-course, there are parking maximums, where in Lincoln Park, there are minimums. We're recommending changing to maximums in Lincoln Park. And then access management. Lincoln Park's ordinance has quite a few, has a pretty extensive access management section. So sort of working between the two communities and using that as a base in a way to, to make those, those access management standards uniform between both Lincoln Park and E-course. Then finally landscaping. Both communities have landscaping standards, but there, there are differences. So standardizing those landscaping and screening requirements, and then also implementing triggers in the, in the development review process that would require the improperly paved lawn belts, like shown in the upper right photo, to be replaced with landscaping. And finally, review procedures. Align for administrative review when, when appropriate to expedite the, the review process. Determining what development standards are priorities. And then finally, a big one is strengthening and prioritizing enforcement in both communities. So we can have these standards, but they need to be enforced. So that was a very quick overview of zoning recommendations, but I will let Brian go through some of the design recommendations for Southfield.
Thank you, Liz. So we will, as Liz mentioned, we'll begin on Southfield Road. And we'll start with a little bit of the big picture and then drill down into, into a little bit more detail. Please keep in mind that this is a conceptual study, so we're presenting general ideas and general design concepts that will ultimately need to be flushed out further during future implementation phases. This diagram is, is of the South, Southfield Road Corridor with Dix Highway on the left side of the diagram, and then the Detroit River and Jefferson and E-course on the right side of the diagram. Fort Street is roughly in the middle, just a little bit to the left of middle. And as we, as we talk through this, for purposes of, of understanding, we divided the corridor really into three different design solutions or design typographies. The orange section on, on the left really occurs between Fort Street and Dix Highway, where the, where Southfield is a divided roadway with the center a green median. And then east of Fort Street, we have what we're calling Typology 2 and Typology 3, which are, are really variations on the theme. Currently, it is a five-lane roadway plus additional curb use lanes on either side. And actually, I'm going to go ahead and flip slides here. So through the, through the course of the study, DGL has, has looked at traffic volumes and, and created a traffic model, which, which Lori will come up here in a little bit and talk in a little bit more detail about. But the, the root outcome of that is that on the east, on Southfield, east of Fort Street, the roadway currently has excess capacity, meaning that there are more travel lanes there than what are needed to adequately flow traffic. As a result, that gives us the opportunity to essentially do a road diet, a five-lane to a three-lane road diet, and create other opportunities for on-street parking, protected bike lanes, and pedestrian improvements. So that's, as, as Carl mentioned, we're looking at transportation equity and balancing all of the transportation uses within the corridor, vehicular, bicycle, pedestrian, et cetera, and, and transit, public transit as well. So in this, in this snapshot, which is an enlargement just east of Fort Street, we're looking at transitioning from the five lanes on the left to a three-lane cross-section on the right, meaning a center turn lane and then one traffic lane in each direction. And if I zoom in a little further, here you can start to see that transition. Towards the right of the diagram, you see those three traffic lanes, on-street parking. And then on the outer edges of the roadway, at the existing curb line, inserting protected bike lanes. So bike lanes, and then there's a buffer strip in between the bike lane and the parking. So that's, that parking and the buffer serve as a, both perceptual as well as a physical safety barrier from moving traffic. And in cross-section, it looks like this. So the, the upper cross-section is the roadway as it exists today. You see the center turn lane, and then moving outward from there, two traffic lanes in either direction. And then a, a curb use lane, which in various locations, sometimes that's, that facilitates parking or, or bus stops or, or just no parking zones. So that, that varies as it goes through the corridor. But you can see that in that cross-section, in some locations, that curb use lane is, is extremely wide. So we can utilize that, that pavement space without moving the existing curbs and repurposing that in, as you see in the cross-section below. So again, a center turn lane, and then one traffic lane in each direction, a parking lane, the buffer strip, and then the bicycle lane on the outside adjacent to the existing curb. Now, with the steering committee, we explored a few different options for the, for the buffer strip. The quickest, easiest, cheapest, but probably least impactful option for that is to simply do roadway striping, to stripe out that, that buffer area. Next step up from that, slightly more costly, but also more positively impactful, is to, again, use striping, but then use a series of pylons or bollards to delineate that, that buffer area. And then the third option, the most costly, but clearly the most impactful, is to, is to use raised curb islands that could facilitate landscape stormwater management. And those raised curb islands could also be the location for EV charging stations to serve the on-street parking spaces. And actually, I'm going to go back a slide. And there you can, on the right side of the diagram, you can see in plan view what we were just describing. This drawing illustrates the, the buffer space using the striping, and then the little black dots are the, the pylons or the bollards that would serve as, as vertical protective barriers.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
I don't see on that map the parking that's in the middle of Southfield. Is that part of the planned stay?
It is. So what we're talking about now would be east of Fort Street. And we'll talk about that area that you're speaking of in just a moment. Yes, but yes, the, the direct answer to your question is that that parking is proposed to stay. Okay. So east of Fort Street, there are two locations where the roadway, existing roadway narrows down due to obstructions. One is the, the bridge at E-course Creek. And then the second is the, the railroad overpasses in, in E-course. So at both of those locations, the roadway necks down in width. And that's what this, this typology illustrates here. So we essentially maintain the same idea of having the protected bike lanes on the outside edges of the roadway, adjacent to the existing curbs, using the protected buffer strip areas, and then three lanes of traffic, the center turn lane and the, the one travel lane in either direction. The only difference here is that due to that, that constriction of the roadway, we are essentially dropping out the, the on-street parking lanes for those short distances where we're going over E-course Creek and going underneath the railroad bridges in E-course. So here you can see that, that cross-section existing on the top with the five travel lanes, and then the proposed on the bottom with the three travel lanes, the buffer strips and the protected bike lanes. So again, for this area east of Fort Street, between Fort Street and Jefferson at the Detroit River, there are currently five, five regulated crosswalks. Meaning, and by regulated, I mean that they occur at signalized intersections. That's quite a distance with only five crossings. So in order to, to improve that condition for the pedestrian, give, give more permeability from north to south and south to north, looking at opportunities to add, add regulated crosswalks. Those can occur at existing intersections, and in some instances, occur at mid-block crossings. And at those mid-block crossings, the traffic analysis shows that using rectangular rapid-flashing beacons, which is the photograph on the bottom right of this slide, these are essentially pedestrian-initiated signals where a person crossing the walkway would put, push a button. The signals and the overhead signs will flash, alerting drivers of pedestrian presence and improving safety for those crossings. At the existing crosswalks, there are opportunities to reevaluate signal timing. So we increase the amount of crossing time that pedestrians are allowed. Currently, the timing, the pedestrian phase of the signals is, is very short, and it's, it's difficult for people to cross the full width of the roadway before the pedestrian phase expires. So we will be looking at improving that. In the center image, the center vertical image of this slide, you'll see a yellow line, which essentially follows the E-course Creek as well as the Electric Avenue Corridor. Thinking about non-motorized plans, SimCOG has developed some long-term priorities, of which the Electric Avenue Corridor shows on their diagrams. So thinking about that, as well as the Lincoln Park and E-course priority of developing a recreational trail along the E-course Creek, essentially creating a loop through the community that connects numerous parks, schools, daycares, et cetera, as well as the critical services on Fort Street and Southfield. So that, that would occur, and then the crossing of Southfield would occur at the, at the mid-block crossings that I mentioned with the RRFB signals. Talking about protected bike lanes, this, these are example images of what those might look like. On the far right is, is an image with a striped buffer area. And then where that bike lane intersects driveways or roadway intersections, it would receive the, the green pavement marking. So that's, that's an awareness for the non-motorized users, as well as drivers alike, that, that there is a bike lane there and to watch for those non-motorized users. The top center image is the bike lane with the, with the bollards or the pylons. And then the bottom center is the raised curb island that I mentioned that could serve a stormwater management function, as well as a location to house EV charging stations for the on-street parking. Transit and pedestrian amenities throughout the corridor. Be looking to improve sidewalk conditions. And as Liz mentioned earlier, in instances where there are encroachments into the right-of-way and into the sidewalk environment, looking to enforce those scenarios so that we provide consistent landscape through the corridor, as well as contiguous pedestrian sidewalk facilities without having vehicles parked over the sidewalk. Looking at improving transit amenities, benches, shade, concrete pads at bus stop locations, providing accessibility for those users. And at the, through further analysis, identifying the, the bus stops with the higher, the highest ridership, and looking to install shelters at those locations. So Typology 3, this would be the, the area that, that you just asked about, between Fort Street and Dix Highway, where, where the roadway has the center, the center landscape median, or in the case of downtown, the, the center parking lot area. Looking to, to maintain those, those median uses. And then looking to improve pedestrian connectivity and non-motorized assets. So right now, there are a couple gaps in the sidewalk connectivity, specifically on the eastbound route underneath the railroad bridge. There is not a pedestrian sidewalk underneath that railroad bridge now. So for people to safely get from one side of the railroad bridge to the other, they would need to cross to the, to the northwest bound lanes and, and use the sidewalk that's over there. The sidewalks are also currently about five feet, and looking to, to widen those so that they can serve as shared-use, non-motorized facilities. Enlarging this a little bit, again, we did, we performed some traffic analysis. And Lori will talk a little bit more about that in a few moments. But underneath that railroad bridge, there, that is currently a dedicated right turn lane to the I-75 ramp. And our analysis has shown that because that is a right-turn-only free-flow movement, that we can, we could actually get rid of that, that turn lane, at least the small section of it that is underneath the railroad bridge, which would allow for pedestrian connectivity, adding a new sidewalk there. And then that turn lane would pick back up again as it's underneath the I-75 overpass. In this particular section, there is an existing right turn lane between the I-75 ramp and, I'm sorry, I just blanked out on the name of the road. I'm sorry, I just blanked out on the name of the road.
Lafayette.
Lafayette, thank you. Thank you, appreciate that. So that dedicated right-turn lane between I-75 ramp and Lafayette, we could also reclaim that for additional landscape space and to enhance redevelopment opportunities of the parcel along that section of roadway. That also allows us to narrow the crossing distances and enhance the pedestrian crossings with some of the RRFB mid-block crossings that I had mentioned. So again, looking at increasing the frequency of pedestrian crossings. What might that look like? The photo on the top left for the railroad bridge as well as under I-75 overpass, looking at opportunities to enhance those underpasses with pedestrian sidewalks, murals, pedestrian barriers or physical barriers in between the sidewalk and moving traffic. So in this particular example, that takes the form of a decorative rail. For Lincoln Park, we would suggest a decorative retaining wall with a decorative rail on top of it. So again, just providing that physical barrier between the pedestrian environment and the vehicle environment in order to improve non-motorized comfort for those users as well as lighting, looking at lighting beneath those bridges and railroad overpasses and the same for the railroad bridge and E Course, opportunities for sculptural artistic lighting that is also functional and the idea of the murals to lighten and enliven that space. So moving towards Fort Street, we will show you the same sort of conceptual ideas for Fort Street as we just looked at for Southfield. I should mention that we had some late-breaking news Thursday, Friday last week, that we had a conversation with MDOT that was very positive. And there may be more opportunities to alter the cross-section of Fort Street, at least north of Southfield, than what we had previously thought. So very good news. We'll show you our preliminary thoughts that we had developed prior to that conversation and then I will talk a little bit about how that might alter our thinking moving forward. So actually, I'm just going to fast-forward here a little bit. Again, the length of Fort Street, looking at inserting some additional pedestrian crossings using the RRFB signals. And then immediately north and south of Southfield Road, there are two Michigan Lefts. MDOT, we understand, has changed their guidance on Michigan Left configurations since the point in time that Fort Street was constructed. So we believe that there may be an opportunity to remove those two Michigan Lefts that are immediately north and south of the intersection and reclaim some of that to enhance the direct downtown environment, which also reduces some of the vehicular conflicts that occur in that location now. So for, again, this, what I'm about to show you will continue to apply for Fort Street south of Southfield Road. The conversation that we had with MDOT does not affect south of Southfield Road. So again, what I'm describing now will still apply, having three travel lanes in each direction. And then the curb use lane, looking at better defining that than what it is today. So looking at creating defined parking zones, defined bus stops, and using the buffering techniques that we talked about on Southfield Road in a similar fashion. So striping buffer zones, using pylons or bollards to better define those areas and creating some pedestrian bumpouts in strategic locations to reduce the crossing distance, the crosswalk distance for users crossing Fort Street. So this, again, is a cross-section of what that looks like. The top is the existing condition with three travel lanes in each direction plus the curb use lane. And then the bottom section is showing repurposing that curb use lane to better define parking, bus stops, et cetera, and reducing the pedestrian crossing. So for north of Southfield, our conversation with MDOT revealed that we may be able to reduce a travel lane in each direction and still accommodate the necessary volumes of traffic in that portion of the corridor. So what we're intending to explore moving forward is the idea of creating a buffered or protected bike lane similar to what you saw in the graphics for Southfield Road. So that is not a foregone conclusion at this point, but is something that with MDOT's new information that we will be continuing to explore.
Did he say anything about Lori?
Also during this process, MDOT approached the city with some coordination for replacement of the Fort Street bridges over E Course Creek. They approached the city with a proposed design for the southbound bridge and possibly increasing the width of that to accommodate five traffic lanes. We felt as a group of consultants and as a steering committee that this was really counter to the idea of transportation equity. So we're suggesting that the bridge essentially remain the same width as it is today. And there's currently a Michigan Left turn lane that crosses that bridge. That turn lane could be shortened and still provide adequate stacking space. And that would allow that drive lane to be eliminated from the bridge. So that would allow the bridge to stay essentially the same width as it is today. So with that, you've heard me talk a lot about traffic analysis and the results of that, of how we can repurpose some drive lanes. And Lori is much more capable than I of explaining why that is.
So before we look at some more details, we did come and we counted traffic throughout the corridor. Every signalized intersection from Dix to the river and then from the entire Fort Street corridor. And the key to this whole thing is the Southfield-Fort intersection is really the linchpin of the entire study because it sees the most traffic. And we are working with MDOT. Anything that is done on these trunk lines does have to have MDOT approval. But like Brian said, the meeting we had last week certainly gives us hope that we can do some of these road diet items because we think they work. Our traffic models show that they work, but we wanted to confirm that they would allow that to happen. And they seemed very receptive to that. They said they're doing it in other locations and with some of their resurfacing projects, they are having communities are asking for bike lanes and different things. So it was a very nice meeting and we're looking forward to working with them a little further. So what we decided to do is we looked at whether the road diet would work, whether some of these elimination of lanes would work, you know, what would be the best thing to, obviously, we need to keep traffic moving during the peak periods, but we also want to have this transportation equity, you know, how do we make this all work? And so what we thought was, let's look at this road diet and then let's talk about, if you're in a location, how much shorter or longer time would it take you to get somewhere? So right now, the existing travel time in the corridor from I-75 to east of the river, of the E Course River, is about four, a little over four minutes. That travel time doesn't really expect to change. And then where we looked at here was if I was on Dix Highway and I wanted to get onto I-75 North, what would any of these changes do? So the existing travel time is a little over seven minutes. It stays a little over seven minutes. That's a 4% increase in travel time, not significant. To go from I-75 northbound ramp to Applewood Avenue, a little bit longer timeframe when we're talking about a road diet. But once you narrow that traffic down, that's a safer situation. And I think that people would feel comfortable spending a little extra time getting somewhere, knowing they were safer. Here is getting off of I-75 northbound and coming around and turning south onto Fort Street. And in this particular instance, we're seeing a decrease in travel time. And that's because we're changing some lanes approaching Fort Street and allowing extra movements to occur. And that decreases our travel time. And then this one shows us I-75 off-ramp, southbound. So you get off the southbound ramp, you turn right, you do the Michigan Left and come back along Southfield Road and turn right and go on to, southbound onto Fort, also a decrease in travel time. And these are all during the PM, during the PM peak. Here's another alternative where we talk about southbound off-ramp to Sixth Street, a little bit longer time, but that's when we're getting the longer times as you're coming into the road diet east of Fort Street.
And Lori, you might just mention that when we're talking about longer times, we're talking about 30 seconds.
Yeah, we're talking about, you know, 30, 60 seconds. This isn't like, you know, 10 minutes or a lot of extra time. Does anybody have any specific traffic questions they'd like to ask right now?
Where do you put the snow when you have a lot of snow to blow? Do you fill up the bike lanes with it or the parking spots?
Thank you for that question. So the protected bike lanes, we've proposed those at critical widths so that the snow removal equipment can access those. And just like the street is today where you have a road edge with a sidewalk adjacent to it, you know, that snow needs to be pushed away. The same instance occurs with protected bike lanes and with the buffer space that's created between those and the parking lanes or the travel lanes, that actually presents a little bit of an opportunity for snow storage.
But how do you get around those barriers between the bike lane and the road tubes to blow that?
Right, so the width of those between the curb and those barriers is wide enough for a snow removal vehicle. So that we're not necessarily removing the snow in between each one of those bollards, but there's snow clearing of the bike lane on one side and there's snow clearing of the roadway on the other side.
So you have to have special equipment to clear the bike lane, right?
No, just standard pickup truck, snow equipment.
The snow plow won't force snow into the bike lane?
It would be clearing snow from the bike lane.
I don't think you understand me. The snow plow goes through.
Correct.
And pushes that snow right into the bike lane. So then you're going to have to make another clean pass and clear that bike lane out. Otherwise, that
That's right.
Isn't going to be usable until May.
That's right, that's right. So both the roadway and the bike lane get cleared of snow.
And the city's going to have to buy special equipment to clear that bike lane?
No, a standard pickup truck snow plow can clear that.
We have pickup trucks in our plows.
To the chair, Dr. Hahn?
Yes.
My question is, I know you're calling them protected bike lanes and then the additional pedestrian paths with barriers. I'm still concerned about the safety of the pedestrian and the safety of the bicyclists because the speed limit is still high. What does MDOT say about that?
Yeah. So in Michigan, the process for redefining speed limit is a speed study, which is actually conducted by the Michigan State Police. And they use what's called an 85th percentile rule, meaning that they conduct a study, measure the speed of traffic as it flows today, and set the speed limit at the 85th percentile of the speed that they measure. So with speeds that you see today, it's probably, and this is just me making inference, we haven't studied it in detail. But if vehicles are traveling quite a bit over the speed limit today, conducting that study would probably result in an 85th percentile that's actually higher than the speed limit that's out there today, which could actually raise your speed limit. So the solution to that is implementing improvements that intuitively reduce speed. And then once that occurs, conducting a speed study may be more beneficial and achieve the result that the community hopes for in terms of reduced speed limits. So the improvements that you've seen here tonight of narrowing the perceived width of the roadway, adding defined parking spaces, the bike lanes, additional crosswalks with the RRFB signals, those are all improvements that help reduce that perceived roadway width and the perceived, I'll call it highway effect, so that drivers have a tendency to slow down and be more aware of the environment around them. And then, like I said, once those improvements are in place, then a speed study may be more productive.
So we wait for the speed study?
Yeah.
Is that what you've seen in other communities?
It is.
Okay.
It is, yeah. Does that answer your question?
Yep.
Okay, great.
To the chair.
Question here and a question in the audience. Go ahead, man.
So when you say the parking, are you talking curb parking, tires to curb? Are you speaking of bumper to curb?
Tires to curb, so parallel parking.
Parallel parking, okay. Thank you.
My question is, when you infer a speed study that was done now, that people are naturally going over the speed limit, is there a way to survey residents and people that use that road to make sure that they know it's 45 miles per hour? Because while I do see a lot of people going over 45, I also see plenty of people, you know, being pretty happy at 40 miles per hour. I know it's been 45 for quite a few years, but does everyone know that it's 45?
Yeah, that's a good question. And there's certainly a community education component that goes along with all of this. So that's something that would be very beneficial as we move forward.
Okay.
To the chair, if I may.
That's correct.
This might sound kind of weird, but MDOT doesn't have a very good reputation in the city even cutting the grass. So how do we take trust in MDOT going to do everything you're talking about? Because the county controls Southfield as far as I know. It's not the city. So the county's going to have to come up with a pickup truck on top of a big plow to do what you just talked about, okay? Second of all, if you're conducting, compressing the lanes, evidently you haven't drove Southfield during the rush hour because you don't want to have heavy trucks. You have every imaginable vehicle you can name. And I drive Southfield and it usually starts off of I-94 in Allen Park and you get over in the right-hand lane because you're never going to get over until you in the right-hand lane because you're never going to get over until you get to Dick's or Fort Street or the, I mean, Dick's or I-75 because there's so much traffic. Now, you're talking about reducing that traffic. And am I correct? Because you're got, you're cutting some of the lanes out to make diet?
Only east of, of Fort Street.
Only east of Fort Street. So, you're not talking what I'm talking about, right?
Correct.
Okay. The other issue is, and I guess the last issue is, is this, who's going to pay for this big project? This is going to cost big bucks. Somebody's going to have to, and different agencies. How do you, who do you perceive is going to do all that?
Yeah, so that's a, that's a very real question.
Okay.
These are, as you know, these are long expanses of roadway. It's a lot of, it's a lot of distance, it's a lot of square footage, big area, and it, that just by nature translates into big dollars. The, the city has already begun engaging potential partners for grant sources. Wayne County has, has come alongside and has actually already included some of these potential improvements in a grant application that they, that they have done. And Carl has been, has been instrumental in, in shepherding those groups of people. So, Carl, would you mind talking a little bit about that?
No, that, that's a, right, it's a, it's a big project, you know, whether you're talking about Southfield Road or Fort Street. One of the reasons why the consultants were coming up with different approaches to road diet was because some of this stuff could be just absolutely too expensive and out of the question. Or we'd have to wait for years, maybe decades, to see money get put together. This is one of the next steps, okay? They've come up with some concepts. Those things need, and they have cost estimates. And that's what we're doing now. We're trying to figure out, okay, how do we put together a program to implement these improvements? You know, it might be a matter of starting at ground zero, whatever we define that as, and, you know, going away from it, you know, just expanding outward with some schedule. But, glad that it was pointed out that we have a real good conversation going on right now with Wayne County. And Wayne County is putting together an application to submit to the state of Michigan, asking for some of its ARPA money to make some of these improvements or to fund some of these improvements. You know, I don't know how that's going to pan out, but that's a good place to start. You know, the, I've had some conversations with MDOT. You know, I was thinking that maybe there would be extra highway funds put in through that infrastructure improvement bill. There's a lot of stuff in that bill that got passed by the US Congress, but the funding for transportation, with the exception of mass transit, is about the same as they've been planning. So, you know, there's no sack of cash coming down for highways specifically. But, you know, there's other things we can look at. There's a, a transportation enhancement program that both the state of Michigan and SEMCOG have, and we're trying to develop a good relationship with SEMCOG. In fact, SEMCOG is the entity that funded our Fort Street study, okay? So, we're building a rapport with them. And we've got some other asks into SEMCOG for, there was mentioned something to look at trails on the E-course Creek. You know, that's an aside, but, you know, we're, we're working that. But, there's this thing called Transportation Enhancement Program. And lots of the communities will take a bite-sized thing that they want to accomplish in a downtown and ask for TIP funding, or excuse me, Transportation Enhancement Funding for that purpose. So, we'll, you know, we'll get those things put together and applied for. You know, next steps, you know, I, you know, again, I'm not trying to be critical, but there's, I probably got a laundry list written down in my notes here of next steps that we're going to have to do as a community to be able to implement what we want to see happen on either of those corridors. And, you know, you just can't do a plan, throw it on the table and hope it happens. You've got to roll up your sleeves, you've got to do more cost estimates, you've got to seek out grants, you've got to develop internal strategies. You know, one, one thing in particular, you see carnage along that Southfield Road corridor because of businesses that have cars parked helter-skelter in the right-of-way on the sidewalks. They've filled in grass plants with asphalt. We can take care of that ourselves by developing an enforcement strategy to turn that around. So, you know, it's, you know, some things are going to cost lots of money, it's going to take some time, but there are other things that we can do to have some positive results incrementally. There's also something else that's going on here. You know, you've heard this in some conversations we've had, and there are zoning recommendations that were briefly mentioned. We, we have a consultant selected, you've endorsed it, and we're going to get some financial aid for that zoning code upgrade from the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program. You know, people often say, what's that all about? Why bother? Well, because we're doing the right thing, we're trying to become best practices as a community, it's helped us to get some funding access to help with some of the major things we need to do. So, anyway, you know, I'm going to be quiet now, you probably have some other questions, but I'll, I'll run through about a half a dozen things later that would be next steps.
Thank you. Thanks for explaining all the, because there's no free lunch. That, that's what I was getting across. Everybody's going to come up to the, through, the chair, apologize. Everybody's going to have to come up, including the cities. And I'm just one where all the money, grants are great, but, you know, grants tend to go away after a while. And you still got to go and, you know, but anyways, I appreciate you telling me.
That's a good point. I'll tell you one other thing about grants. Rarely do you get away with not having some local match.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
To the chair, your honor, to the chair, if you don't mind.
Yeah, go ahead.
First, an observation, then a question, but in regards to Councilman Kelsey, when you get off I-94 and head down east on Southfield Road, there's, the stray lights aren't really timed that well. There's a lot of backup. And I'm not sure, you said the time is five or six minutes, whatever, but certain times of the day, you get stuck at every red light. But, on the other side, going from Fort Street, going north on Southfield, which is really west, the Tim Hortons backs up there. Have you guys considered that? Well, that's kind of a hamper there in the morning, it gets congested. So, I see that part of Southfield Road, to me, I wouldn't say wasted time, but I would, I would concentrate more on Fort Street going towards E-course and Fort Street going north. Those two concentrate areas because I know you, there's some other items in place currently on the north side of Fort Street off of Southfield. So, my question is, that was just my comments on the traffic because I, I drive there daily. In regards to E-course, they have a bike trail, if I'm not mistaken, on Jefferson Avenue. There's no partitions that I noticed, but they have the, it's painted. So, I could see a bike route going from Jefferson to Fort Street, maybe turning, you know, going towards Detroit, going north. So, I, I do see that and I do see the parking that you talked about. There's a couple of car places where there's cars parked, that, that could be addressed. A lot of the businesses in that area, actually, there's, the facades could be improved, right? There's actually some businesses in that area. So, I would concentrate on that area first and, because going towards E-course, I think that would be a wonderful idea because that needs, that needs work. Anything going north on Southfield Road, I don't, I don't see that happening anytime soon. So, those are my observations and really not a question, but that's my thought.
Yeah, we, we concur with you that the section of Southfield east of Fort, towards E-course and the section of Fort Street north of Southfield, I think are the, the biggest opportunities for transformative change. There are opportunities for improvements on the other two legs as well, but they are not as dramatic or transformative as, as the areas that you mentioned.
Thank you. That's all, your honor.
Well, we thank you all very much for your time. We've, we absolutely loved working on this study. It's, it's a lot of fun and we, once, once that vision is, is in your head, it's easy to get really excited about. And, and we're excited for the city of Lincoln Park and the city of E-course and the opportunities that this presents in the future. And we, we hope to be part of it moving forward. So, again, thank you very much for your time and appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carl, do you have, do you have next steps? Then we'll open up for additional questions.
Yeah, just, you know, I was just jotting out a few things here, but these are the type of next steps that, that we have to go through yet. Okay, we, the consultants are going to reexamine the northern reach of Fort Street from Outer Drive down to Southfield Road to see what kind of road diet could make sense there, as you've heard. Okay, we're, they're going to prepare a final report. The report is going to be available and it ought to be adopted because it's going to be a plan. It needs to be adopted as an amendment to the city's master plan. So, that's something that'll have to be done. I mentioned the zoning code update. We will need to take the recommendations in this study and plan and incorporate them into the zoning code update. And, you know, there's detail there that makes a whole lot of sense. We want to coordinate with E-course probably on at least three things. Number, or number one, they've updated their zoning code as I understand it. So, not that, you know, we have to follow in lockstep, but we want to make sure that, you know, that we're all sort of singing out of the same hymn manual and that we're trying to accomplish the same outcomes. I haven't looked at E-course's zoning code. I'll just assume it's, you know, perfect at this point, maybe not. We may have to have some dialogue and talk about that a little bit. A second item, I understand that E-course has already designed improvements to the Southfield Road corridor. You know, they're, they're part of the Southfield Road corridor, is maybe 25% of the length. And they've already engaged an engineer and they've designed these improvements and I understand they're going to be implementing them sometime soon. Well, that might give us a cue to follow in terms of what designs, details that we get into. Remember, the plan is conceptual. That's all got to be drilled down into, at some point, if we get funding, construction documents and the like. One final item that comes to mind with coordinating with E-course, E-course and for that matter, Wyandotte, we all share the E-course River. And both communities, E-course and Wyandotte, as well as Lincoln Park, can work right now to put together some ideas and plans and concepts and do the study for trail system that ties together ability for pedestrians and non-motorized traffic to navigate along E-course Creek. You know, either in the, in the creek or, you know, outside of the creek. But, we did apply to SEMCOG for a grant to fund another traffic-type study that would focus on developing, you know, that network and tying into it, you know, the school sites and parks and, you know, everything else that we have in the proximity and reach of E-course Creek. We've got to put together a strategy to start cleaning up our right-of-way. You know, sure, you know, the businesses might need to have some on-street parking, but they don't need to have helter-skelter, cars, you know, just laced all over the, the right-of-way. You know, how did these grass plants get filled in with asphalt? You know, something may have happened. You know, we need to take a look at that, but we, you know, we can start doing that. There's nothing wrong with, you know, starting that motion. And then, last but not least, and Carlos Celcida actually mentioned this, I'm pretty sure, yeah, we need to look at what we can do, what kind of private sector incentives we can put together to help stimulate some positive outcomes with redevelopment and occupancy of these buildings on the corridor. The one thing that we don't want to do, and you didn't see this in the plan, is there's no call for wholesale, let's buy it, tear it down and start from scratch. There'd never be enough money to do that, believe me. We've got a built environment, they're humble buildings, but they can be useful for the things that we're talking about doing. Small manufacturing, occupancy by artisans, you know, stuff like that. So, that could, that can help. Anyway, those are some thoughts for next steps. I don't know if Liz has any at this point, but do you want to conclude this? Does anybody in the audience have any questions?
I have.
Yes.
Go ahead with her.
Yeah. Please state your name and who you're with.
I'm Lady Anne Cleve. I'm on the EDC. I also own Ale Petrie &amp; Sons Bicycles. And as far as bike lanes and your concern about traffic being so fast, the way that it's set up right now, people are riding in what we call a parking lane and then going out around a parked car and back in. And cars are not leaving three feet that you're supposed to leave between a bicyclist and their car driving. So, it's much safer for them to be in a bike lane and then you've got your parking lane and then you've got your moving traffic. Also, most of our businesses have their entrance to their, their shops right on the sidewalk. I don't know how many times people have been just knocked over by a bicyclist walking out of our store because they walk right into that bicycle traffic on the sidewalk. So, a dedicated bike lane would be much safer than the way any of it is set up right now. Just.
Yeah, and we've, the consultants have had conversations with Piac and Mr. Walker, is it? Is that his last name?
Waterman.
Waterman, I'm sorry.
Oh, Peak.
Yes.
It's Peak.
Yeah, Peak, okay, Piac.
It's, it's an acronym. Program to Educate All Sectors.
I got you. Okay. Any other questions?
It's going to be extremely helpful.
Yes, I had, I'm interested in how that section east of Fort Street was determined to be underutilized. I mean, what, what steps were taken to, to figure that, figure that out?
Could you speak to the traffic modeling and, you know, how you determine that? Because you, you not only looked at existing traffic, but you also projected, yeah.
Yeah, so, when we, when we did the counts, you can see a definite decrease in traffic once you get past, I would say, Electric. And so, that, that was the first step in determining that possibly a road diet could occur there. There, there's some, there's some volumes and some recommendations as to when you might consider reducing lanes. And, and once we got east of Electric and north of Fort, or north of Southfield, I'm sorry, on Fort, you start to see the, you could start to see that traffic step down where it's starting to get in the ranges where you could consider that. And then, we did some traffic modeling to look at it. We can provide some videos, once we get into this final report stage, we can provide videos that we can, you can put on website or SharePoint and everybody can view them that show, that show that this works based on the traffic that was counted.
Did Gordo Hall Bridge cause any traffic shifts coming our way? Is it, where is that all traffic intended to come?
When you read, when you read the studies, it, it makes it appear that it wouldn't. But, you know, I'm, I'm sure, we all know that when changes occur, there's always a shift. Same as you would have, you know, if something else happened. But, how, but I'm not sure how we will need to, we can look at, you know, if there's an increase in traffic of a certain percentage, would that road diet still work? We can consider that.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and, and in the same vein as if I-75 had an incident, people would still get off I-75 and, and try to use local streets to get around temporary, but it would be a problem for a short time.
Well, when I-75 is shut, that section probably had the traffic double, but not tripled during the pandemic.
Right, right.
Final comments? Liz, did you have something?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Charlie Lee Alzner, I'm Councilwoman for the city of E-course. Has any of this information. About the Southfield corridor between the pieces that you were marked up on your display?
Yes, so, yeah, so, there was a steering committee formed for purposes of participating and informing this process. And the city of E-course was participating within that steering committee. And Carl, did you have specific contacts that you wanted to mention?
The gentleman that runs their finance department, I don't recall.
Tim.
He's been working with you.
Yeah, he's been in the loop, and, you know, I don't know who has contacted, the consultants would be able to answer that better. But, you know, they, this wasn't done in isolation. There were outreach made to get information. There were a variety of meetings. I don't know who attended what. I was primarily concerned with what the new, or, excuse me, the Lincoln Park contingency was involved in. I know there's members here from the EDC, the DVA, the Planning Commission, they were, you know, involved in the background studies and gathering information and indicating preferences and things of that nature.
Okay, you just confirmed that E-course is not, is in the know. So, that was my main concern. So, I will follow up with Mr. Sedowski.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Mayor, council.
I had a question. My name's Daniel Bright. I'm a volunteer DVA. And so, with this design that we're coming up with, like, has there been or will there be conversation between the surrounding cities, like, how the design's going to blend into those? For example, when you come into or leave the South Gate on Fort Street, when you come from the South Gate, you're like, yeah, the lines are huge. And you jump into Lincoln Park, and you feel like you're about to get disgraced. You know what I mean? Like, so, will there be like a blending of both worlds of Detroit and Allen Park?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Good question. Yes, there, as far as physical design in the short term, there'd be blending and tapers of the design from one city to the next. The eventual hope would be that the non-motorized improvements that the cities of Lincoln Park and E-course initiate would be continued into the other cities as well. So, that would certainly be the long-term goal, that we wind up with continuous non-motorized corridors. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
My name's Jason Bear. I don't know if this would apply to this traffic study specifically.
Just read that part.
The light at Southfield and Ferris, which is just two blocks, you know, E-course, D-course. Would this be classified under pedestrian and car safety as far as the possibility of installing a left-turn lane light there? Would that fall under the purview of the traffic study, or would that be a separate issue?
Yeah, that's certainly something that we can look at within the model.
Because I can certainly attest to, as a pedestrian and a driver, how many personal close calls I've had, and how many people never stop at the amber light when you're trying to make a left turn.
And that would be eastbound?
Yeah, Southfield and Ferris.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Is the design group that looked at the corridor study of Southfield, are they aware that Wayne County is in the process of presently designing a bridge? They're going to be doing removal at the, over top of E-course Creek?
Yes, we were made aware of that, yes.
Yes, sir. Jordy Blue, Commander 552, Lincoln Park, VFW. From what I've heard tonight, it doesn't sound like you're going to take too much of the parking spaces between the VFW and/or 167 American Legion and the bowling alley across the street. And I consider that that's pretty safe ground for our parking, because if it ain't, we're done like this.
Yeah, our recommendations are that the parking within that general vicinity, stay as it is today.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything further? A project like this takes a great deal of work and behind-the-scenes meetings and everything. So, everything that you all have done, I mean, is appreciated. So, we thank you for that. And with that, there's no further discussion. The study session will be adjourned, it looks like, 7:16?
See everybody in ten minutes. James, it's really warm.